I was gonna say, no editing allowed.
Okay, so we are recording.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, November 10. Unfortunately, if you're watching this now, we were not able to get the YouTube functioning at the time that we were recording, but it will be posted, I'm sure, immediately after completing the meeting. So, thank you for your patience with that. We tried many, many times, but couldn't make it work. Before we begin, Counselor Johnson.
Point of order. We'd like to check with our executive liaison person, but we have to have it as a public meeting. If it's being recorded, it's not a public meeting. Is that not correct?
That is correct, Your Worship, through you, the Chair. We did advertise it as a Committee of the Whole Meeting. I think if we, however, there is no question period during Committee of the Whole, so I believe if we provide an opportunity for the public to view it, even though it's after the fact, I think that would be sufficient in this case. It's a bit out of our control. However, if the committee wishes to make another recommendation.
Counselor.
I concur. I accept that.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Jacobson, you had your hand up?
Oh, I was just gonna say, did you wanna try and do a Facebook Live?
I've never done that through, I've never done that.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure how to go about doing that.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
Okay, so everyone's all right if we continue. Counselor Johnson, if I can get you to mute your mic.
Carry on.
Okay. I think I got as far as to introduce the meeting. Before we get going any further on the agenda, I'd like to acknowledge that tonight's meeting is being held on the traditional territory of the Staminus people, and for this, we are thankful. All right, we'll get going. Our first item is to call the meeting to order and then have our agenda approved for the evening. Do we have any movers and secunders to accept our agenda? Okay, Counselor Patterson, seconded by Mayor Stone. Are there any, is there any discussion or changes to the agenda? No. No? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Continue. Onto minutes. We've got minutes 3.1. That is, the recommendation is the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held September 8, 2020 be approved. Do we have a seconder and a, or first mover and a seconder? Counselor Jacobson and seconded, nope. Someone waving.
Question, question, or comment. Just a small correction, page six, item 4.5. I was, that, I was also opposed to that motion.
Item six, 4.5.
Yeah, page, page six, 4.5.
Okay, so can we make that correction?
Yes, we will.
Okay, any other? Did we get a seconder on that, a mover and a seconder? No. So Counselor Jacobson, I believe, moved it, and Counselor Stevens seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Seeing no opposed. Item carried. Next one is the minutes. Two minutes of the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting held October 27, 2020. And the recommendation is that the meeting, the special meeting of the whole held October 27 be approved. We have a mover and a seconder. Hey, Counselor Patterson and seconded by Mayor Stone. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Approved, thank you. And we'll move on now to number four, which is a presentation from Infrastructure Services regarding the town GIS system. And I will hand it over to Ryan Boma by looks things.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, Ryan. What you got for us?
Thanks for having me. So I'm just gonna share my screen with you. Let me know if there's any issues. Oh. There's an issue. We've all participant sharing. So, Donna, are you the host?
You should be fine now.
Okay, let me give that another whirl. Okay. So this is, what GIS is, it's kind of like Google Earth. I'm sure you've all used Google Earth. And this is just a version of that, in a sense, that's just more tailored to the town of Ladysmith. So, this is, let's see if we can get this moving. This is the town of Ladysmith. Sorry if it's a little slow. There's, it's quite a heavy load on bandwidth, so. So, you have the ability to search addresses, which I'll do just to demonstrate. We often get phone calls. People say, "I live at such and such an address," and maybe it's kind of an obscure place, and we're not sure where it is, or we're just absent-minded, but I'm just using a random example here. And it'll take us to, okay. And then maybe they're, maybe they're asking a question about where water service is or something. So, in GIS, this is one of the things that differentiates us from Google Earth, is we have the ability to look at all our utilities. Okay. So we'd be able to tell this individual that their water meter is about one and a half meters from their left property line. Okay, so that's kind of helpful for us, especially if they just need a quick, quick idea, a quick reference of where something is. Okay, and then another thing. Another thing we have is we have aerial images. These, again, are specific to Ladysmith. So this here, I'm just showing you an example of the Hollin Creek area, the new subdivision up there. And so we actually have a few images, and we can see the transformation happening over time. So this is also very helpful to us to see what's gone on in the past. And these dates are not quite correct. They need to be fixed up, but you know, eventually we'll have the proper month and date that these were flown, and then we can see exactly when things were happening in the town. Another thing we get often is people will want to know how big their property is, or maybe will need to know, or a certain distance. So we're able to do that with kind of the click of a button. These are all approximate. We never offer these as a guaranteed type of measurement, but we can do something like that, and we can see this is your typical 670 square meter lot type of thing. And we're also able to measure distances. Sometimes they wanna know the distance between the center line of the road to the property line, or something like that. Okay, let's see if I can just move you out of the way here. We also get a lot of questions about trees, and whether they're on the property line or not. So our parks guys, they're often, they look after the trees. They're often getting calls about boulevard trees, and we have the property lines overlaid with this aerial image, and we can see that this here is a boulevard tree that would belong to the town, whereas this would be a tree that belongs to the property owner, and this is quite useful for us. Again, it's not 100%, but when it's clear, we can provide that information, or if it's on the property line, then we can recommend further action. So that's, you know, all these property lines are something Google Earth wouldn't provide for us. And the last thing I'll just share with you is, you can actually draw right on, right on this thing, so you can say something like that. You can put text on there, you can draw lines, and things like that, and that can be quite useful when we're quickly making up a sketch to kind of illustrate something to a consultant, or maybe to a homeowner, and we can print it off or email it. So, going into the future, what we hope to be able to do with this is, we'd like to be able to get this into a tablet function so that we can actually provide it to our Public Works workers. They can bring it in their truck, and like the tree example I mentioned, they'd be able to bring that up right in there, on a laptop in their truck or tablet. Our guys would be able to, you know, find leaky pipes or plugged sewer systems. They would be able to find that stuff kind of quick and easy where it is. I'll just turn on more of these utilities. And and so it'd be kind of an on-the-go package, rather than something on the desktop. So that's one of the things we're working towards. We'd also like to be able to click on one of these utilities, and right now, we can click on it, and we get very little information about it. Sorry about the load speeds. So right now, I got the road there, but just one second. So that tells me it's a water service. But eventually, in the future, we'd like to be able to bring up more information, such as the size of the service, maybe even a record drawing showing us exactly the engineer's drawing from 2006, or whenever this was constructed. We'd also like to be able to click on properties and then get a lot of legal information, tax information, you know, homeowner type of information for contact and things like that. And we'd all.
Are you okay if we ask questions on, on our way through, or would you rather we wait to the end?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I meant to mention that. Feel free to interrupt and ask any questions.
Yeah, and I can't see everyone at the one time, but I do have Counselor Jacobson with her hand up.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Inanda.
Hi, Ryan. I was just wondering, as far as the services, the utility service lines, and the cataloging for that, are we going to be able to maybe more efficiently catalog when they maybe do for service, or when we could be keeping an eye out for when they're gonna start to maybe need to be reviewed, or anything like that? Like, is that in the, in the works as well?
Absolutely. So, one of the most powerful features of this for Jeff and I is that exact thing. So, when we do click on these things and have that information, the age, the type of material, and things like that, we would actually be able to do something called queries, where in the background, we can ask the software to tell us exactly where all the pipes are that are over 50 years old, made of asbestos cement, or whatever, you know, kind of criteria we set, and it would be able to spit back all of those pipes for us, and then we can start gauging what needs to be replaced based on that. So we might, through a query like that, we might be able to say, "Oh, we have, you know, 3,700 meters of this problematic pipe material." And then we'd be able to start planning and budgeting for that.
Okay, Counselor Jacobson, did you have a follow-up?
Um, I was just going to say, thank you, and I'm sure this will be very helpful for budgeting infrastructure projects in the future, so that we don't end up with big surprise bills.
Yeah, that's the plan, hopefully. Yeah, it has lots of other functions. I'm, I'm kind of describing this from an engineer's perspective, but there's also lots of planning functionality to this. I was just getting into touching on the, the properties. You could quickly pull up development permits, zoning. You know, maybe this house has a building permit that hasn't closed yet. Maybe that would be able to be attached, that kind of information. So, there's, there's a lot of power wrapped up into this thing. But you're hearing some of the engineering things. So yeah, the final thing I just wanna touch on is eventually, in the future, once we have some of these other things I mentioned, would be a public version. So, other cities and towns like Nanaimo and Parksville, Victoria, they have public versions that you can launch right off of the, you know, nanaimo.ca website, and you can see, you know, your own property information. Realtors can use it. You know, consultants, people from out of town can get information about real estate they might be interested in. So, Johnson?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Johnson. You'll have your mic. I can't see everybody, so if somebody else who's watching can see them, you can queue me.
Okay. The question that I had is, from, I'm part of the Historical Society, and this would be really good for our archives. So, will the public versions be available for a long period of time, where you started, or it'll just be for the period of time that a person's gonna be looking at? For example, I wanna look at this in 2050.
So, this never goes away unless we ask it to. It's, it's not public right now. This is entirely internal. Only a few people have access to this, but we would be able to control when parts of it are public, what parts of it are available for what period of time and that sort of thing. But if you say there was something, some information that you see here that you wanna be able to access in 30 years, we could never guarantee to the public that we would make that available in 30 years.
The thing I was looking at is, it's nice to be able to see the progression of the town as it expands over a period of years, and it's a goal that the Historical Society has always been wanting to do. So, if they had the ability to have the overviews, it'd be neat, the details we don't care about, but thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. I understand what you're saying now better. So, that's why I think the aerial images are very helpful. I personally really get a lot of benefit out of these, whether it's for annual changes, or for, as you're alluding to, more long-term changes. So, right now, we're getting about one aerial image per year. We've had actually streak of good luck. It might not be that frequent, maybe every couple or three years. But the ability to toggle it and see the different images and how things are changing is quite useful to historians, engineers, planners. It's quite universal in its appeal.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Boma?
I have one.
Okay, Counselor Patterson?
Does this, does it track now, or will it be able to track, track in the future, other services such as gas, hydro, telephone, that kind of stuff?
So GIS has that capability. I don't know too many municipalities that use that information, because it's not our utility. So, if, you gotta be careful with GIS, that you don't rely on it too much. Like, the property boundaries and the dimensions that I mentioned, they're all kind of approximate. They're good for high-level information, and hydro and gas and those sorts of things, they're not our utilities to really put that information out there. So although it's possible, I'm not sure it's, it's an avenue we're proceeding down.
But for, for, just a supplemental question, for, say, when it, when it's a public, when the public can access it. So if somebody is, is doing some work, and they'd be able to see where, if there's underground hydro or underground cable or gas.
Yeah, again, it's, it's, so we are the, I guess, the holders of this system, the owners of it, and and when you put it up out there for the public consumption, you're a little bit responsible for that. I mean, we would include disclaimers and everything else, but to reproduce another utility's information, although it's possible, I'm not sure it'd be something we would do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Hey, I'm not seeing anyone on screen, and I'm not hearing from anyone, so thank you, Mr. Boma. That was very interesting. It's always great to see what the update is for, for the work that's going on. I know that's one thing that's been getting looked at for, for a while, certainly since we, we started on council. So, Mayor Stone, did you have a question?
I was actually just a comment. For historical information, Google Earth actually provides, you know, a back timeline. So, as they go forward, if you're looking for more, like, seeing how the town's grown and stuff, you can already pull that up on Google Earth today, and, you know, some, as the further you go back, the less frequent the images are. But, you know, I've used that with my property to find the historical doc that was there and things like that. So that information's already available, not on Google Maps, but in the Google Earth program.
Yeah, that's, that's right. And I'm not sure how, how available that information is, but I do wanna talk to our GIS consultant about bringing those into ours, so we'd have even more options, but they're not quite as detailed as the photography we get. But yeah, those are available if you're, if you're not aware. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you. I'm back again, another time. Thanks. Okay, moving on to reports. We've got five, sorry? Thought I heard something. Reports, we've got 5.1, and the recommendation is that the committee receive the July to September 2020 financial update report from the Director of Financial Services. And I will turn it, oh, should we, I, I guess, do we have to move and second these? Or we just receive the information?
Either way, is acceptable. We have put a resolution suggested on the agenda, so it wouldn't hurt to make a motion to accept.
Okay, so are you moving that, Mayor Stone? Okay, moved by Mayor Stone and seconded by Counselor Stevens. A question, Mr. Patterson, or Counselor Patterson?
Yeah, the minister doesn't go very well. On page 14, revenue operating grants projected to exceed budget by $33,000. Maybe it's the way I'm reading it. Additional operating grants were provided to offset programs offered. The traffic fine revenue sharing grant was $5,000 greater than budget. So, the grants that we got did not cover all the things that they were supposed to cover?
I'll direct that to Director of Finance.
Thank you. It's the opposite. These grants have actually exceeded what we thought we were going to get with them, and they are offsetting to the expense, but they just show up differently on our financial statements. So, if you got the money in, it shows up as a revenue, and we got more than what we thought, but the funds that we have received from those go to another place to, to fund the actual expense of it. And please note that this did not include any of that COVID money that was just announced.
Okay. So we, I guess, wrong phraseology, but we made money on that.
We got more than we were hoped for at the beginning of the year yet.
Okay, now, just one other one, and it shows up in a couple, but on page 25, the keeping track of them, going down to Stalking Lake Rupture, budget $14,450, spent nothing. It's on track. If we haven't spent anything, that means that, to me, we haven't done anything, but we're on track?
Not all projects were, were expected to be completed by September, but I'll pass that to our Director of Infrastructure Service to answer the specifics on that project.
Yeah, so that project, the main project was completed. There is about $14,000 remaining, and that is to do the actual control at the bottom of that pipe where it enters balancing reservoir. And that work, we're having some trouble getting a valve to work in there, so that, that part has sort of been on hold.
Okay, so that, 'cause in, in a couple others, like Batty to Thetis Water Main Loop, $80,000, spent zero, but we're on track. So, same kind of scenarios?
We're not hearing very well. Maybe you could try that again. We had a lot of feedback on that one, Director Goodall. If you could try it again. Are you there? Your voice is still garbled, for some reason.
Maybe he could send out an email to us tomorrow or something.
No, it's still garbled. I wonder if, if perhaps Aaron Anderson would have the answer for us?
This project was one that was just approved recently, and it's to do with the subdivision. So council just awarded that one to be added to, so the subdivision, as it goes through, then the, the project will actually, will actually expand. So it's, it is on track. It just didn't need to be done at this point in time. Looking to the end of the year, it might not be done, but again, it's all developer-driven.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor Patterson?
No, I, personally, I think those ones should say not started or on hold, but anyways, okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Counselor Johnson? Counselor Johnson, you have to hit it and then pause for a second to let it catch up.
Now we got it.
There you go.
On page 13, under expenses, we have garbage services. The approved budget is $527,000. Year-end forecast is $425,000, with a variance of 103%, but we're showing a minus 1%. I'm just wondering, is there extra numbers to come?
We are expecting to be under budget at that one. And we'll get back to you on that number. I just, off the top of my head, it's not sinking in why that says the minus 1, but we do have some projects. The annual cleanup did not happen, so we will be under budget on those expenses. And some extra costs that we had anticipated, we'd be using people, additional people, to be doing our recycling program, the ambassador program. That didn't happen, so we are looking at being under budget in those, at that one. But I will get back to you on that percentage.
Similarly, with the Protective Services, the budget approval was $2,103,000, and the forecast is $1,735,000, which is a 368,000 differential, which is really good for us, but I'm just wondering about those.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. The percentage does seem to be off, so not for the RCMP one, or sorry, the Protective Services one, we are down a few members for the first two quarters that we've received our millions for, so we are expecting to have a surplus at the end of the year from those ones.
Okay, and I mean, page 23, Public Works, paving Fourth Avenue, Matthew and the Bel Air, it's showing delayed. Have we got an update as to when we're gonna be looking at that project again?
I will pass that one on to our Director of Inspector Services, if his microphone's working.
Jeff, you can also use the chat if you want to put it in the chat response, and then either the Chair or myself can read it.
Well, we're waiting for him to use his plans, Chuck. The other one I had was Downtown Washims is showing a budget of $100,000, but we won't be spending that this year, because we have all the various grants and the work of the good service clubs.
That will be on our books as a $100,000 project, but the funds come from different places. What you're seeing is just a list, you know, what the project costs are, and yes, you're right, the lovely service clubs have donated or committed to donate a large portion of that fund, so we're just down to a small reserve that we had allocated, real property reserve, for $32,000, but the town's contribution will be.
Okay, and the other one that was downtown patio tables, it shows a budget of $28,490, and our commitments were $7,000. Is that gonna change, because with all the people donating tables, is the $7,000 of the cost is to install them and things like that?
Again, once we, we have the actual full cost to it, total expenses will be listed on here, but you're right, this was funded from other places. This isn't necessarily the amounts of taxation that was used, it's just the.
Yeah. Director. Director of Infrastructure, perhaps, I don't know what's going on with your connection tonight, but Eric, Mayor Stone, do you have a suggestion?
All he has to do is leave and rejoin the meeting.
Okay, do, we'll let you try that, Mr. Goodall, and see if we can get a better connection with you for future questions. Thank you. Do we have other questions? Counselor Johnson, I'm gonna wait and see if anyone else has any other questions first, if you don't mind.
No.
Anyone? Okay, I had one question that I wanted to put forward, and just a clarification, on, on some of the listing of things, sort of, it would be the last section from 22 on, some of them are listed as not started and other ones are listed as delayed. Can you define the difference between those two things? Was what, why are there two terms being used there? How are they different?
Good question. So not all projects were expected to be on, like, started between January and September. So some of the projects that aren't, like, that we actually had anticipated starting later into the fall would show up as just not started. Some of the delayed ones are ones that we did go down the path and then realized there's, there's something else that's amiss. It could be lack of staffing or lack of consultants or lack of contractors to, to push the project to be on track.
Okay, so in terms of a timeline, the intention was to start them, but they weren't able to be started, therefore they're delayed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson, did you want to have another question?
Yes, page 26, sewer UV pilot study. It shows that we're budget 139,000, it's gonna cost 234,000. You're talking about requires money. Where do you see that money coming from or how do, how can we help in that case?
We are hoping to be receiving a grant on that one. We actually have a commitment. We don't have all the paperwork just yet on that one. And keep in mind that this is actually a phased project, so some of the, the pilot testing that we are doing can be moved into the other parts of the project too. But maybe the Director of Infrastructure Services could elaborate on that one, if his speakers working.
Give it a go.
Is it working now?
Oh, boom.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Yeah, so the UV pilot project is, is a pilot project that's spanning more than one year and it's going to have quite a number of parts. We have applied for a fairly large grant to help us with that and we have heard recently that, that our application has been moved to the next level. So it's now at Mayor Council to make a decision and we're hoping to have a decision back in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Follow up, go ahead.
When this UV pilot study, that's gonna be doing ultraviolet and all the final outflow, so therefore the stuff that's going to go into the ocean is gonna be as clean as possible?
Yeah, through the chair. It's, it's, it's probably not gonna be any cleaner, but what it is right now, we use chlorine. We chlorinate and then we de-chlorinate before sending it out into the channel. And, and this basically eliminates the use of chlorine, which is, is something that the shelf industry and particularly the Federal Drug Administration in the US would like to see. So that's the direction that we're moving in, is trying to get rid of the chlorine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We had a question from Counselor Jacobson.
For the Director of Finance, when we look at, let's say the projects that came in under budget, if those are done and complete and they're under budget, where do the additional funds, where the budget, like, where do you move those additional funds? Do they get shifted to different projects or do they get put back in a pot for next year or?
Most of the times they get put into a reserve for capital projects for future years. On occasion, you'll see that I do come back and I say, can we move the funds from this project to this project when there are large value ones? Some of the little tiny ones where it's projects, say within FGCC, we just shift some of those ones around, but it's all within the threshold that council has allowed me to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question from Counselor Vertanen.
Thanks, Counselor McKay. Along the same lines, on page 15, the solid waste, so we're 103,000 under budget. Sounds like a lot of that is due to the, we didn't do the cleanup and the ambassador program. We hear anecdotes, anecdotally anyways, I haven't been up back for a while, but about the amount of garbage that is being illegally dumped. So is there any chance that, I know Counselor Patterson sent an email to us not long ago regarding this along the same lines. Can some of that money go to cleanup if needed? I don't even know if it is, but, or, or what?
Through to Director of Finance.
Through the chair, thank you. This, that, the council decision, if, if they would like to allocate some funds to a cleanup, then that's, that's can easily be done. It's just a matter of the motion to direct staff to do, so.
Okay, thank you. Question for Mayor Stone?
Just a comment on the cleanup. Usually those areas are outside the town's boundaries and in the, historically, they've been funded through the regional district. So when they have the annual cleanups, the regional district has provided compensation in terms of either reduced or, or zeroed out tipping fees. I'd have to look at to where that's at, but generally it's been supported at the regional district level, but that doesn't preclude council from doing it. But because most of the dumping is actually within the regional district, that's typically been done through regional district finance. That being said, it's up to council and if council wanted to have me follow up with the CVRD about the status of where that program is at, I can find out.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further, oh, we have a question from Counselor Stevens.
Thank you. On page 26, just under the waterfront subheading, I'm wondering, water, there's a, a, it's maybe like our last session, a catch-all, but waterfront projects, $220,000, what can, do you have a breakdown of content of what's in that category?
Not directly. So if council recalls that it's the, an amount was allocated, the 400,000 per year over the five years was allocated to the waterfront project. So this is just what that would be if we had that position filled and we would know exactly what the, the projects are. It's just a way to make sure that we have it budgeted. And again, to remind you, it all comes from the real property reserve, so there's no tax implications.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Stevens?
Thank you. And just in terms of stat, the status column there, there's, there's quite a number of non-started or not started, I should say. The present assessments that are going on by Gold or, are they the sort of key that opens the door to start some of those? It would, it would, I, I'm assuming storm drain relocation and road alignment and things like that, or maybe contingent on that study first?
I will ask the Director of Development Services to clarify that. I, I believe you're correct, but is Mr. Bella Baba around if he could answer that question? There we go.
Sorry, my camera's not working. I broke it. But my blinds can answer the question. There are some works that are contingent on remediation, but there are others that are not. So some things like road alignment may not actually require remediation first, but other things such as subdivision, certain rezoning, certain types of construction do. So it really depends on exactly what the item is, but we are sort of monitoring that and undertaking work that we can and holding off on work that we cannot.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, did we have another question? Oh, man, why me? I'm sorry, I'm recomposed. Do we have another question? Counselor Jacobson?
Sorry, just one really quick one. Under Protective Services, there's a truck replacement and it says that it's on track. Is that, what else needs to be done for that? That would go to?
Or Director of Infrastructure Services?
I can answer to that one. That truck just needs to be delivered. It hasn't, we have the purchase order on it. It's all been ordered and stuff. It's just.
So that's the final price?
Yes, that was the purchase order. Them add-ons for, I think, a radio and stuff like that at the very end, but it won't go over the, the expected budget.
Thanks. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor for a recommendation to receive the report. Seconded, or it's moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Looks like it's passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Counselor Patterson?
Well, before I forget or anybody else, Mayor Stone brought up an item under discussion about the excess of funds and working with the CVRD and other groups about the cleanup and he asked if we would be interested if he went to CVRD along those lines. So I don't know if he was making a motion that, or is it just something that if we say, hey, good idea, he could do, he could go with it?
Done at the CVRD, so I can report back on what the status is.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to reports, this is item 5.2 and the recommendation is that the committee receive the building inspector's report for the months July to September 2020. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Stevens moving and seconded by Counselor Patterson? Any discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, two questions. When I look at the building permits and number of suites, et cetera, whenever a house is built with a legal suite in it, is it counted twice or is counted as a new building?
CAO McGarick, sorry?
I believe our Director of Infrastructure Services has that answer.
Okay.
Yeah, I can answer that. So if, if a building permit comes in, you can see it at the top of the page there. So if someone's building a, say, single-family house and it contains a suite, it could come in just as one permit. Because it, it's just one permit for both dwelling units.
Follow up question?
Go ahead.
The number of permits coming in, a lot of the houses I see being built have suites in them. What is your impression of the applicants for building permits that are having suites in them? Because that affects our sewer.
I'm not, I'm not, not sure what your question is.
If we got eight new houses being built, are we looking at them as eight houses or 16? Because if they all have suites. So I just want to get the idea of the impact it's gonna have on our services. So how many new development permits are asking for suites in the houses?
Director of Infrastructure.
I, I don't have that, that, an answer for you on how many building permits have both a, a single family with a suite, but I think we could get you that information, no problem.
Okay, and one more follow-up of I mean.
Yes.
It shows in August, building permit for $1.8 million for industrial. Can you give us an idea what that building will be?
No, I can't, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Patterson?
Just down at the bottom corner of the, bottom left corner of the page, where it says this month, single-family dwellings for, there's a note, four building permits equals four dwelling units. No single-family dwelling plus suite, suites added to existing or coach houses this month. So there would, of the four, there would be no suites, is the way I read it, right?
Right.
So is that correct?
Yes, so that, that is correct. And I think that the number that we're looking at is, is that there are, if you look also there, it says year-to-date, so there's 21 single-family units and, and it talks about how many suites and coach houses, but I want to double-check that, just to make sure I'm answering the crash question correctly.
Other questions for this report? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Pass, thank you. And moving on in our agenda to 5.3 and the recommendation is that the committee receive the Lady Smith Fire and Rescue Report for the months July to October 2012, 2020, sorry. And, oh, Mayor Stone? Oh, okay, changing his mind.
Moving receipt.
Okay, so, yes, so moved by Mayor Stone and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Discussion, or, okay, Counselor Johnson?
It's more of a comment. With me being an old gentleman and my eyes getting worse, I preferred the old form to the new form. That graph takes up too much space, makes the picture small. So I would hope that you go back to the old form. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand. You're prefer it over the graph or you would just like bigger printing?
No, I, because of the size of the page, the graph is taking up half of it. As a result, the printing is small. Do we need the graph? The, the text gives all the information and it's bigger and easier to read for old people.
I personally prefer the graph, so I think it's, it's, I think it's great to have both. I don't know, maybe it is possible to have bigger, bigger font on the chart. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Through the chair, we can, we can work on that and probably put like one on one page and then the graph on another page and just get more pages.
There you go. Unfortunate. Okay, other questions or comments for this report? All right, seeing none, all in favor? And opposed? No one's opposed, thank you. Moving on to 5.4, which the recommendation reads that the committee receive the coastal animal control, control services report for the months May to July 2020. Do we have a mover? Okay, Counselor Jacobson, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussion? Counselor Patterson?
I just want to know from the last report, what happened to the chicken?
It crossed the street.
Okay.
Sorry, it was an open net. Or do we have any other real questions for this report? Oh, Counselor Jacobson?
I'm just curious and I, I don't think it's anything that we want to know, but does the, do we know if bylaw services tracks if they are going to, let's say they pick up the same critter multiple times, what, like, do they keep track of that and if they do, at some point, like, how does that, does it just progress in fines or how does that work?
Question, I would guess that it does, but CAO perhaps have the answer for us?
We'll check into that and get that back to you unless Director of Finance knows. Sorry, being new to this game, I'm not up to date on your animal control services.
Any repeat?
Sorry, as exactly expected, it's, the fine does increase as the multiple infractions are on the one pet.
Okay, great. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried, thank you. Moving on. 5.5, the recommendation is that the committee receive the RCMP reports for the first three quarters of 20, first three quarters of 2020. And moved by Mayor Stone, seconded by Counselor. And moved by Mayor Stone, seconded by Counselor Stevens. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson.
Just again, it's a comment. This is the first time I ever remember getting a report like this and that's very appreciated. And hopefully we'll carry on in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Other Mayor Stone?
Want to give the the same shout out to our new CEO. I don't know if that's official or not yet, but for for doing these reports, I really appreciated them at the Cowichan table from the North Cowichan detachment. And it's great to see these here because it just gives you that trend line. And you can see even looking at the reports through the three quarters, the impact that COVID has had on both what seems to be like petty theft type stuff as well as things like assault. So I think it goes with what we've come to know as the difficulties around COVID, but it is really appreciated.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of accepting this report? Any against? Thank you. Moving on. This is now item five point six, and the recommendation reads that the committee received the bylaw compliance statistics for the period of January to June twenty twenty. Do we have a mover for the motion? Counselor Verkanen, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to the end of our reports. We'll now move on to section six, which is council submissions. And this evening we have an item six point one, and we're going to have Counselor Verkanen have a discussion with us with regards to single use plastic items. I will hand it over to Counselor Verkanen.
Thank you. Miss Chair, Madam Chair, Mrs. Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. You're doing a great job tonight, by the way. Okay, I hope I'm not going to be looked at as a guy that keeps bringing things back because I brought lifecards back last time. And I did, we did discuss single use plastic before, and I think we kind of put it on hold because there was other municipalities bringing it and they were going before courts. Anyways, I'm sure a lot of you guys are aware that earlier this fall, the provincial government announced that it is moving to approve all those municipalities bylaws. And the federal government actually went a step further and in an effort to be plastic free by twenty thirty, I think, they want to ban six items of single use plastic, which I think are plastic bags, straws, stir sticks, six pack rings, cutlery and footwear that's made from hard to recycle plastics. Anyways, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here yet because I would just like to bring a simple motion forward if I can. And I would just like to bring a motion that we direct staff to prepare a report regarding bans on single use plastics.
Prepare report. Okay, do we have a seconder? Counselor Stevens. Sorry, I was busy writing it down, but I guess that's not what I have. Thank you. Count our Mayor Stone, discussion.
Yeah, I'm just, obviously, this would actually be a recommendation at council that staff.
Sorry, that's what I meant.
But the 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 only concern that I have is based on our previous experience with being an innovator in composting and recycling collection in Lady in Lady Smith in the past. Is that we don't get caught up in moving forward on an individual bylaw that would likely be maybe less than a year in advance by the time it was adopted that the federal regs come through and that anything that we do do on this potentially would align with the federal program because in Lady Smith, when they did the multi materials recycling programs, we had to then undo everything we had kind of done to come into alignment with the the provincial regs. So I'm totally happy to support the motion and and maybe have staff bring us more information into our discussion at council. Just being wary of of developing regulations that may only last for a part of a year and then having to redo them when the federal regulations come down.
Yeah, good advice. Okay, thank you. Counselor Verkanen, you had something to add?
I yeah, yes, yeah, sorry, I wasn't. I thought I was going to be able to speak to the recommendation first. No, I fully agree with Mayor Stone. I don't want to bring in different regulations. That's why I wanted to keep the report vague. Because, yeah, like, what is? Yeah, what is the best way to go? Do we just wait for the federal government to ban it? And then that's what we do. And maybe that is the way we go. Or maybe we look at what I think it's what Richmond, Victoria, Sanich, Tofino, and Yukon. Maybe there's a boilerplate bylaw that just kind of stands good for everybody. Which is why I just wanted to keep the motion vague or the recommendation vague that maybe staff can kind of look into all that for us and that's all.
Bring back, bring back for us a recommended course of action. To see, okay, Counselor Patterson had a question.
Thank you. I I can agree totally with the intent, the direction of the motion. It's just, and and I can support this motion going to staff, but I just would not want to waste staff's time because I cannot support one that is strictly local. This is something that at least the province, but more likely the feds do. So every municipality, every regional district is playing under the same rules. Here we could have, we have a grocery store that has outlets in other jurisdictions. We could have something that bans a product that they use, but they can't they that they can't use here but use in other places. It could get very confusing. So I think this is is a much needed project, but it it needs to come from the top down and everybody covered. So everybody is playing by the same rules, not just here and then fifty kilometers away. They've got different rules and fifty kilometers away, there's no rules whatsoever. So I would like to see us, if you want to continue, I can support getting staff to do some work on it. But I think it's something that we need to push the federal government to do and get UBCM to go back with a hammer and beat on them about it.
Thank you. Mayor Stone.
So on October seventh, it was announced that the federal government was going to be banning those items at the end of twenty twenty one. I think what the 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 approach might be, and this is more appropriately a discussion for council, but would be that we look at the infrastructure that's put in place by the federal government and how those requirements bleed down to local governments. And then we may look at doing something to strengthen or to complement those existing regulations. But again, you know, we can discuss it more at council, but like I said, I support this resolution, just being mindful of, you know, the confluence of jurisdiction and other regulations that may come forth.
Thank you. Counselor Stevens.
Thank you. Just just a comment mostly. I like the open ended nature of this of this motion. It seems to me that the 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 driving issue in all of this is going to be the phasing. And so if we can have a good discussion about what what other levels of government are doing and their timetables, I think it allows us to have that, as Mayor Stone has said, maybe maybe a local flavor to the overarching regulations that are coming our way and thinking about phasing ourselves. This may in fact affect elements of of our own operations in terms of some of these plastics. So I I like the motion a lot and I'm look forward to the discussion later at the council.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Johnson.
It appears to me that if we send this to staff to put time and effort into it, and it's going to be superseded by other things, it's a waste of time, effort and money. And again, what is the point of us putting in a bylaw if we're not going to enforce it? Are we prepared to spend time, effort and money with a bylaw enforcement officer to run down these things? It's basically an apple pie issue. You know, everybody agrees we got to do something regards to the question of plastics in the ocean. But, you know, why spend money that is going to go nowhere and especially if we want to enforce it? That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments? So I'm wondering if perhaps we could add the word or the piece around a recommendation to bring high level information so that it doesn't feel like two owners are tasked. No, Count or Mayor Stone is shaking his head. Go ahead, Mayor Stone.
Oh, I think the motion, this is just a motion to make a recommendation to council. So it would come on our next council agenda. I think that staff can get some time between now and our council meeting to at least kind of have some thoughts on the issue. And then when it's at the council table, they might be able to provide us just a very high level background that would allow us to to give clearer direction at council. I I just don't feel it's fair to put him on the on the spot tonight to 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 figure out how that might be. So I I think that the the general nature of the the motion, staff will take the intent and then we can discuss it at council. That's just my my piece instead of modifying or amending Counselor Verkanen's motion.
Okay, so the idea being that we would have have a little bit more discussion at the council meeting. I I think overall, perhaps the the big thing that needs to come of this is our agreement as a as a council that we support the movement that direction for society in general. And certainly we'll be looking for the direction that we get from the provincial and the federal government levels so that we can align with it and do the best job we can with it. So if if there are any other comments or questions, well, maybe we can get our corporate officer to read us the motion and then we can vote on it.
Thank you, Yourship. The motion reads that the committee recommend that council direct staff to prepare a report regarding bans on single use plastics.
Okay, everyone hear that? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Johnson opposed. The motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Verkanen. And we don't have question period or anything on Committee of the Whole Meetings.
Correct.
I think that is all. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Jacobson. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great.
Great job, Counselor McKay. Good job.
Excellent job.
Great job, Madam Chair.
Bye, guys. Thanks.
Building pyramid for the toilets today.